Well, the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting on December 17th to order the clerk will call the roll.
Borowitz. Brooks.
Here.
Alderman Crawford will be absent. Frank. Freeman.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Would you please stand to pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, Christmas is upon us, and as our city council gathers to do the work of the community, let us offer a prayer of thanks for the gift of faith that has seen us through another year. A year with challenges and triumph like any other, but with more awareness that real evil is alive in the world and reaches out to disrupt the very foundations of freedom and the destiny of this great nation. Grant us the strength and sense of purpose as we go forward to stand united and stalwart against all those who would threaten our faith, our liberty, and our way of life. Let us embody rightness of thought and action, believing in one another, protecting and strengthening our community with open hearts and helping hands. Please bless this council for the good works proposed, initiated, and realized this year in our quest to lift our community up in all ways. May our work be pleasing to your eyes. During this holy season, please hear our fervent prayer for true peace on earth and goodwill towards all living things. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen. Welcome, everyone. Have we got anybody registered for public comment this evening? Okay. First up, under number four, we have approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of December 3rd, 2018, as presented. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Alderman Frank, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Brooks.
Aye.
Frank. Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, minutes are passed unanimously. Next up, under number five, it's a two-part. We have two public hearings to read into the record this evening. First up is a proposed property tax levy increase for the city of Belvidere. Please notice that we're reading this into the record at 7:05. This was a notice of proposed property tax increase that was published in the Belvidere Daily Republican on December 6th, 2018. Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to the proposed tax increase levy? If so, feel free to come up and share with us. Hearing no voices wishing to speak, we will close the hearing at 7:06. Next up, we have vacation of a portion of an alley, 315 and 319 South State. We are going into this public hearing at 7:06. Certificate of publication is published by David Larson, the Boone County Journal. The notice was published dated November 30, 2018. Does anyone present wish to speak to this issue? Having no parties to contribute, we will close this public hearing at 7:07. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next up, under special messages and proclamations. I just wanted to share, we had a wonderful hometown Christmas this year. I think everybody really enjoyed themselves. I've heard nothing but positive comments. We had nice weather, nicer weather for a change. It wasn't raining or anything. It was a little cold, but that kept people moving. It's always good to see people. We estimated we had about 35, 3,600 people downtown that evening, which is a nice crowd. Anybody else have anything else they'd like to share with us this evening? Next, we have approval expenditures. First up, general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,445,671.75. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow. Second, Alderman Ratcliffe. Question, comments concerning any of the expenditures as presented? Hearing nothing. All those in favor of approval of expenditures will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Frank. Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
General and special fund expenditures are approved, which brings us to water and sewer fund expenditures of $574,730.10. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Brooks. Second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Third by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning these expenses as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Freeman. Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Frank. Eight in favor?
Expenses likewise are approved unanimously. Under number eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. Please note that items A through G have been received and placed on file, which brings us to item H, minutes of committee of the whole building planning and zoning and public works of December 10th, 2018. May I have a motion to approve these minutes? Motion by Alderman Brooks, second by Alderman Sanderson. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of minutes will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks. Frank.
Aye.
Freeman. Eight in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Which brings us to number nine, unfinished business. We have an ordinance that is tabled and remain on the table until January 14th, 2019 concerning the ordinance regarding private residential chicken coops. Which brings us then to ordinance 438H, a second reading. An ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Belvidere, Illinois, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2018. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow. May I have a second? Second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Frank?
I've gotten several calls today about that, so I just asked Becky if she could say something to the listening audience to explain this a little bit about the tax cap.
Sure. Ms. Tobin?
So, the proposed levy includes a 3.22% increase. But what everybody needs to understand, this doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up 3.22%. The city portion of your property taxes is only a small percentage of your overall property tax. Over 50% goes going to the schools. So that is not what this part of the levy is. This is just the city portion. So, for example, last year, your tax rate was 10.82%. The city's portion is only 1.59% of that. Your school district is over 6% of that. So, something to keep in mind, when we talk about 3.22%, we're talking about only our percentage of the levy. And even though we are home rule and you can levy as high a taxes as you would like to, you have been due diligent about only using the amount as if we were still non-home rule and under tax caps. So it's a formula, and it's based off of CPI, which is your computer, I'm sorry, your consumer price index from last December, which is 2.1% plus new property. So that's how we come out with that percentage, and that's where that 3.22 comes from. So it's the CPI plus new property.
Ms. Tobin, for those that may not quite understand that, as the city brings new property into the city through annexations or new development or have you, that just increases the amount of property you can spread the taxes over.
And that's what's important, is what we call the EAV, your estimated assessed value. As your property goes up in value, the actual tax rate actually goes down, which is a good thing. So obviously, when the recession was happening, our tax rate was actually going up because the city still had to levy to pay bills, things like that. Now that property values are starting to go back up and the assessments are going up, the tax rate's going down. So for example, 2016, the city's tax rate was 1.61%. The following year, which was last year, it was 1.59. So it's starting to go down. This year, or for next year, what you're going to levy tonight is 1.55. So that's a good thing, that our tax rate is going down again.
Some of us have actually seen property tax relief in the past few years. As Becky stated, because we are a home rule community, within the privileges that home rule does give us, we could ask for a larger percentage of the levy. But we stick with what the county's doing with the tax caps and stay in that ballgame. Because we understand that the property tax is the one tax that hits everybody the hardest, is when you pay the property taxes on your home. So we have, and the council have endeavored to keep that as flat as possible every year. And as you can see from the figures Becky shared with you, we get a little tiny piece of that property tax levy, and we have applied it very wisely and kept it as low as we possibly can. So that's how we arrive at the formula. Yes?
So my problem with this is, A, we just imposed a motor fuel tax on our residents, and we increased our sales tax. Increasing property tax is not something I'm really eager to do. Our current tax rate is 10.82. Rockford's is only 10.47. We are actually 89th out of 3,143 counties in the property value assessments. We're ranked 116th of 3,143 counties in order of medium property taxes. It is currently like 4.97% of our residents' yearly income. And we're 82nd out of 3,143 counties in our overall rate. So we have a pretty high tax. Everybody used to come to Belvidere because taxes were low rather than Rockford. You could get a lot better house in Rockford, but you had to pay the high taxes. We're now exceeding Rockford's taxes.
Question for you, after you read all that off. Are you reading off the overall tax rate for the entire county by county? Or are you reading off the portion that is our portion of the county tax rate for the city of Belvidere? Right, this is the total county tax rate, and ours is 1.55, did you say, this year?
Estimated, yes.
Of the property tax rate. So that's not really apples to apples on tax rates. You know, the sales tax rate, you know, I'm sorry we have to raise taxes on anything. I'd like to give you all back your tax money every year. But the reality of it is, we have streets to fix, we have water and storm abatement issues that we deal with, which are now a significant issue that we have to address in the next few years. So when we asked to raise taxes, and we went with 2 cents more on the gasoline tax because we had the lowest amount around, and we went with half a percent on the sales tax, which brought us up equal with everybody, all the surrounding counties, Stevenson County, Winnebago County, city of Rockford, just to get even. See, our taxes have actually been lower than the surrounding area for years, as you said. I think you have to understand what figures you're looking at when you quote figures as to where we rank. Becky?
City of Rockford, their tax rate is 15.10%, which is down from last year's, which was 15.29. The last time, it was 10.47 in 2007, from what I have just read.
So again, this is calculated based on what our share under tax caps is that comes to us, plus the CPI, plus new property that's been put on the tax rolls, which spreads the cost among more taxpayers in the city. Yes, Alderman Sanderson?
Thank you, Aaron. For Becky too. Well, how does that figure with, you know, just to continue the conversation, with the, you mentioned, you know, property values go up. We've, I believe we've had property values go up. I haven't watched as closely as a Realtor, but I've noticed people in my neighborhood are selling their houses for more than they were. So that means more revenue coming in too. So how does that figure in there?
I don't know if that's more revenue for this, you mean as far as property values going up?
Yeah, I mean, the value of their homes are going up.
Well, with the assessed value going up, that's what comes into play for us as far as the levy goes, which is different than what it's appraised for. The assessment and the appraisal are different numbers. So we go off of what the assessment is that comes out of the supervisor of assessments office.
When you get your tax bills, you'll look on there, and you'll see that your home is valued at about a third of the price of the market value of the home. That's what the assessed value is about.
Leave it to Illinois to befuddle everybody and confuse everything. In some states, the city imposes the real estate tax. They collect, it may be collected by the city or by the state, but they impose the tax, they create the assessment rate, the whole bit. Illinois is very different. What is being proposed tonight is for you to simply ask the county to go and collect the money that you think you need to operate next year. And that numbers the number that's in the proposed levy. We don't assess the property. We don't set the tax rates. That's actually done by the county. So the county does, is they take your ask, your, how much is it, Ms. Tobin?
Our total, $5,878,157. That includes the library.
So they take your entire ask, and they look at all the property within the city of Belvidere, and they look at the EAV for all the property in the city of Belvidere, and they mathematically figure out what the tax rate has to be on all the property within the city of Belvidere to garner that amount of money. So in the end, it doesn't really matter what the property is worth because what they'll do is simply adjust the tax rate to collect that amount of money. That's kind of an artificial number. What it does mean, however, is that as your EAV increases, either because the property values increase or because you bring more property into the city through annexations or what have you, then the tax rate actually goes down for the same amount of money. So if you've got property that's worth, you know, the same amount of money, it's going to be a dollar per piece of property. As that property goes up in value or add more property, the tax rate goes down for the individual persons, and they're actually paying less in taxes on their parcels. In our scenario, we're kind of lucky. We had significant industrial development the last couple of years that we can spread these taxes over between Yang Fang and some of the other new industrial development. So that actually gives us greater property to spread these taxes over because their EAV is going up drastically because now they're developed. But the reality is, we don't set the value of the property. That's done by the assessors office. And we don't set the tax rate. That's done by the county clerk's office. All we do is say, this is how much we need to operate. From a procedural standpoint, just so this council knows, by state statute, you are required to pass your ordinance setting your levy this month. And if you don't, you may not have a levy next year. That would be catastrophic to your operations.
Ms. Tobin?
So like, one way to look at it, so for a $100,000 house, if your assessment hasn't increased, which means, you know, the supervisor of assessments have not increased the assessment of your property, your taxes will actually go down next year because our rate went down. Or I'm anticipating our rate to go down, from that 1.59 to the 1.55. So if your assessed value does not change, your taxes will go down. If your assessed value does change, which we don't have control over, that's what the assessment office does, then it could fluctuate, but we don't know what that will be right now.
And the figure that's not getting talked about here is the only reason that we've come forward and asked for more money on the gas tax and on the sales tax is our costs to operate. Think about the city as the grocery store. And how much it costs you to fill a bag at the grocery store today as opposed to what it costs to fill a bag at the grocery store last year, the year before, or five years ago. Our costs go up 5% to 7% a year for the same things that we need to run the city. Our wages go up 2% per year with our negotiated contracts with our unions. The cost of repair and fixing everything that is breaking down because we have an aging infrastructure goes up every year. Sometimes we'll get a lucky year and asphalt costs a little less so we can resurface more streets. We're in the process of putting a new roof on city hall, which was overdue, which is why it's costing as much as it's costing, because we should have been able to do it a few years ago. I think it's also important to understand that in the capital budget for this current year, we had no money, zero for capital projects. And so, you know, we asked the barest minimum that we need based on calculated what our costs are going to be for the upcoming year to pay the folks that work here and to run the city efficiently and to keep everything in working order. And, you know, Ms. Tobin and myself have been talking to this council for the last five years about, you know, at some point, we're going to hit the wall if we don't have more revenue. So this was the year with no ability to have money for capital projects that we brought to the council six different options for ways to increase revenue with the least impact on the individual citizen. And so the council agreed on the things that we decided to do, and we will continue to limp along. There's a lot more we'd like to do, but we stay within constraints of what is sensible and reasonable for everyone who lives in the city. Yes, Ms. Freeman?
So what you just said is the whole reason that we've voted to raise the sales tax and impose a motor fuel tax. I'm sorry, but the median household here already pays over $3,000 in income taxes or property taxes? And isn't the whole point of homeownership is, you know, to improve your property and not let it deteriorate?
Yes. So what's your point?
So, improving your property makes your taxes go up and is basically a deterrent?
Why would it be a deterrent? That's up to the individual homeowner. Okay. Do you remember what the community looked like in 2011? Well, then, do you all remember 2011, 2012? People's property was running down. We weren't, the streets were not the way that we'd like them to be. We had a lot of challenges. So every year, we spend, the money that we collect is your money, and it gets spent on you. And so every year, we look at what we're going to receive from all sources of revenue, and it gets programmed into our entire budget for the year on how exactly we're going to spend it and where we're going to spend it. Ultimately, it all gets spent on the people who live in this community, whether it's fixing roads, or it's working on infrastructure projects, or it's the payroll for the people who work for the city that provide the services that we provide here. I guess I have a hard time grasping the concept that we're raising taxes to raise taxes because we want to. We don't want to. We only raise taxes to cover the cost of operating the city in the way that we've always operated the city, which is to be responsive to our citizens and plow the snow and pick up the leaves and pick up the branches and call when something's going wrong with anything, any of the systems that the city is responsible for that come into your house. Yes, Becky?
And I just wanted to remind everybody, 60% of the levy increase is to pay your police and fire pensions, which you approved those, levying those taxes last month for police and fire. So $95,000 out of the $160,000 that the taxes will go up next year is for police and fire.
Well, and let's address that too for the citizens that are in the room and listening at home. We don't set these numbers that the state says we have to pay into the pensions. We have enough young guys coming into our departments because our departments are back strong at strength that they need to be. This is kind of a Ponzi scheme that the state government has put in front of us. We don't have a choice. They tell us, and we have to pay it. And here's how it kind of works. If everybody here that's in public service, fire, police, retired right now, we'd have to have the money on hand to pay their pension to the end of their life. That's not a realistic figure. So we pay, and we pay, and we pay. And we don't skimp on that, and we're actually paying the highest ask so we can get caught up to what the state's goofy number is sooner than later. So, you know, when we're talking about the community, and it gets stated that somehow the administration of the city is collecting tax money just to collect it, to raise taxes, that's absolutely untrue. We would like nothing, I'm a taxpayer same as you. I would like nothing better than to see my taxes go down. Just like they keep raising the price on your license plates, and the price of gasoline fluctuates all over the place. One week it's, you know, $2, and the next week it's $3. We all serve many masters in this country when it comes to how we get our pockets picked. The one I like to use, because I like to eat, in this time of the year, you know, we like to have a lot of friends in and have the family, and I know what it costs to go to the grocery store these days. And it just keeps getting higher and higher and higher. And it's not anything that we have any real control over. We're not talking about, as Becky said, 1.55%. That's the very least that we could get by on based on our projected costs for doing the same thing this year that we did last year, that we did the year before, is pay the people that work for the city fairly and pay for keeping the infrastructure in the best shape that we can and hope that we're going to get a little money from the state or from the federal government someday to help us get ahead on that. Yes, the spreading the cost of the property tax is occurring, but for us to get all of this new industry here, we're in what's called the enterprise zone. And the enterprise zone has a number of incentives to attract industry that are paid by the state and by our local property tax. So they get a five-year graduated abatement of property tax. They pay 20%, 40%, 60%, 80%, and 100%. So we're going into year three, so we are starting to collect more money each year till we get to the fifth year and they're paying 100% of their tax. The biggest wish that I have, honestly, is that someday soon, in five years or in 10 years maybe, we no longer qualify to be in an enterprise zone where we have to give stuff away to get companies to come here to offer jobs to the people who live here and jobs for our kids. I mean, that's what this is all about. We all are in this together as a community. And we're doing the best that we know how to do, and I'll tell you what, I'm awed sometimes by the smart people sitting around this table, myself excluded. I learned a long time ago, find smarter people than you to be around you to help you do your job. And I love doing my job, and I rely on these people, and I look at everything that they do, and I listen to what they have to say. And they're experts in finance and law, and we have a responsible council that vets everything that we talk about, and they ask good, intelligent questions. But the bottom line is, we're not raising taxes to raise taxes. We're just trying to be able to pay the bills every month. Yes, Alderman Snow?
And one of the things I would suggest too, that people need to look at their assessment and make sure that they're accurate, and if they don't, if they think they're being assessed too much, which ultimately is going to be a tax burden if they're being assessed too much, is to evaluate that. My wife and I did that, and we found some discrepancies in what the township assessor had, and we got our assessment reduced. And ultimately, what that means is, somebody else on the other end had to pick up a little bit extra of that tax burden. But if you, you know, everybody needs to look at that to make sure it's being spread out equitably on everybody.
Comments from the audience? You know, we're happy to have you make comments. It's fine. You don't have to sign up if you want to come up and visit with us. It's just like we're in your living room. It's no- we're in your living room. It's no big deal.
I do want to say something.
Sure, please. We'd like it if you do, but, you know, if you're uncomfortable doing that, stand up right where you are.
I just want to ask about what is the plan for revenue in the city? And I'm not, I don't want, like, I feel like you're, like, kind of yelling at us or questioning. I mean, we want to tell, like, scold you, though, right? I mean, it feels kind of weird. But what is, where is the revenue coming in the city? I see, like, a lot of gambling coming to us all over here. Is that for you, revenue to the city? What are we doing to bring revenue? Right? My house is not worth this. I have a six-bedroom house. I can't sell for $100,000. And I take care of my property and go to my neighbors, and we care, and we care a lot about. I lived here a long time. It matters to me. All of you matter to me. But I have a right to say, what is the city doing?
Sure.
Increase revenue. We're turning to, like, a mini Las Vegas.
I'm not trying to scold anybody, so please.
Well, it doesn't kind of feel that way.
Well, you don't want to come up here and sit, you can use the microphone. I'll sit back there.
I just want to say, like, do you want us to come? Do you want to listen? Do you listen to what you say?
And the point is, I want you to know the facts on how things get figured out and have all the right answers so you can make a correct assessment. So Becky, how much is the revenue from gaming now?
Revenue from gaming is about $280,000 a year.
Okay.
Which is part of our general fund.
And how much was our total projected revenue for the city for our upcoming fiscal year?
So for the current budget year, our total general fund revenues are $17,418,350. That's what's budgeted. Out of that, thirty, only 30% are property taxes. 20% is sales tax, 14% is income tax, 12% is utility tax, and then we get into other taxes such as what's called local use tax, replacement tax, fines, fees, those types of things. So for our discussion tonight, 30% of the city's revenues are coming from property taxes.
So round off the total income for the city?
About 17 and a half million.
What are total expenses projected for the upcoming year?
This current fiscal year, we actually had to use some money that was in our savings account in order to pay all of our bills, about $600,000. Out of our expenses, which is also $17,400,000, 69% is for public safety. So that includes your police, your fire, our 911 dispatchers, our records clerks. So everything public safety related is almost 70% of our budget. The next closest number would be 8%, which is, oh, let me look. I'm sorry, streets, which is 10%. So only 10% of our budget for this year was able to go to roads.
So every year, we run a real close race as to whether we're going to run out a year before we run out of money, just like some of us do every month, whether we're going to run out a month before we run out of money. So we're, we're really, if you put it in simplest terms, we do the same thing that you guys do. You know, you look at what your income is, and you look at what your outcome is, and you try to balance that to the best of your ability, and you hope in a good year, maybe there's something left over. And that's the simplest way. And I apologize, I sound, I don't ever want to sound scoldy. I just was trying to make sure that everybody got an idea of what it is we do with your money. Because it's important to me that you understand fully that that's what we're trying to do is make it stretch just as far as we can make it stretch and make this the nicest community that we can live in. Safe, nice streets, nice ambience, lots of parks, lots of good things, public art. So, anybody else that came to listen tonight, do you have other comments or questions? Everything's fine to ask. It's, yes, ma'am?
I'd just like to know, for instance, like Chrysler and Walmart, are there taxes in the city range, or is it that we can be, if the city Belvedere that it helps them?
All the property within the city, industrial, commercial, residential, pay property taxes. As long as they're within the corporate boundaries of the city of Belvedere, they pay property taxes. As I said earlier, they take our total tax levy request, and the, that's just how much money we think we need to operate coming from property taxes. And then the county clerk spreads that over all the properties within the, within the city. How much they actually pay is based upon what the assessor assesses as, as their property value. Generally, your commercial and your industrial properties are valued at a higher amount than residential on a square foot or a per acre basis, however you want to look at it. So yes, they are paying property taxes.
But what do you think is committed, are there some benefits?
Some are, some are not. As the mayor indicated, the city of Belvedere, well, Boone County City Belvedere, I think it's Poplar Grove and Cherry Valley, if I remember, or is it Caledonia, I can't remember which, are all part of an enterprise zone within the state of Illinois. In that enterprise zone, when a new company comes in and builds, or in some cases, if they put on an addition that creates new jobs, they do get a property tax abatement. But the abatement is not, and this is where a lot of people get confused, me included for the first five years I worked here. They pay, they get an 80% discount on the increase in the value of their property. So let's say with all of their assessments, they were going to pay $100,000 in taxes last year, and they do an addition that would require them to pay $150,000 in taxes this year because of the increase in the value of the property. The discount is only on that additional 50%. So no matter how you slice and dice it, the school district, the city, the county are receiving more income from that addition. That discount goes down each year for five years, to the point where they're paying full freight. And the, the idea is to, when you have somebody like Yang Fang or Magna or somebody else at the Chrysler supplier, or somebody else that is looking to relocate into the area, that we attract them to our area as opposed to going to another location, perhaps into Cal County or something like that, to create the jobs and create the EAV for us. So yes, they do get a discount. Yes, it does go down, but it's not a discount on the entire tax bill. It's only on the new amount.
But on the flip side, what are, what are the community doing to bring in more?
Wow.
Wow. Big question. One of the things is the enterprise zone, obviously. That's a good question for the mayor and our growth dimensions economic development partner.
I will just say, we're doing everything possible. And we move growth dimensions into City Hall. Although they're a public-private partnership, they're not city employees. Pam's office is right next to mine. And, you know, for a number of years, we depended on our neighbors to the west to kind of share things with us when there were inquiries. They know, come right here, right now. We're on the map with the site selectors. In fact, there's something called the Qualified Sites Program that are having industrial properties that are ready for them to come in and do it right now. Well, we filled all but one of ours with this Chrysler thing. We got all but one of the large suppliers for Chrysler, and they went to Wisconsin because they wouldn't locate in Union County. And so, you know, we've got, there's been 4,400 new jobs created since 2017 here. And it's too bad we don't have housing for everybody. We were just out at Magna three weeks ago for a meeting. And they have their employees inquiring all the time, you know, where can we, you know, where can we live here? And we don't have what are called lifestyle apartments, you know, like, imagine Bell School Road or Melford Road, and they have a lot of nice apartments that folks that are trying to downsize when they retire, or people who are, who have got a good job and, you know, want to live in a nice apartment. We don't have those, and we've been trying really, really hard to get somebody to build those. Right now, we're talking to somebody with that property that's right across from the smoking hoop, where they build a few condos to build what are called lifestyle apartments, which are not $400,000 condos. They're lifestyle apartments with supportive retail. So it's all a balancing act. As Mike said, and I think one of the key things that the city attorney said was that we didn't have any of that, that money before for that undeveloped property. So it's kind of like when somebody comes in and you give them a deal on their sales tax. Well, we weren't getting any of their sales tax. So the idea is to not give away the farm, and I won't mention anybody, but I heard there's $11 million got given away so you could say you had a Costco store for one of our neighbors, which is nice, and we're just 15 minutes from them when they go in. So, you know, it's a very, it's a balance sheet. And as I said, the easiest way that it is for me to understand it is it operates on a different scale, obviously, with other different laws and orders from the state and federal government, like our budgets do at home. You know, you look at how much you've got coming in, and you hope you don't have to spend more than that is going out every month, and costs just continue to go up and up and up. State fees, you name it. You notice there are no fees for parking in the state of Illinois. There are no meters anymore.
City Belvedere.
City Belvedere. Sorry, I'm tired.
I pay when I go to Chicago.
So, you know, there are no stickers for your cars. I mean, we continually try to find ways that we don't have to charge people for things, and it costs a lot of money to do everything anymore. New equipment, new dump trucks, $180,000. We retired, what was that dump truck, 33 years old, and we still use it for something? Yeah. New fire engine, you know, that stuff costs a ton of money, and we don't get one every year. Alderman Snow?
And is it a fair assumption, when we were talking about taxes and being high and everything, I'm assuming companies that would be relocating here, just regardless of the enterprise zone, that eventually they're going to be looking at their overall tax burden six years, 10 years down the road, and versus going to Rockford or some other community, they choose Belvedere because generally speaking, the tax rate in Boone County and Belvedere is much lower and more bang for your buck, so.
Yes, Alderman Porter.
Got a question for Becky here. What is our projected income from the fuel tax and the retail sales tax at this point? Do you have any estimates?
Well, the, the new sales tax does not start till January, so we won't start seeing the revenue until April. So as we start to work on next year's budget, I'm going to be projecting some numbers. We're looking probably around 1.2 million for the sales tax. For the motor, for the local motor fuel tax, we're looking probably more, probably close to about half a million. But you got to remember, a lot of that, and as these numbers are starting to come in, those are people that don't live here. Our highest motor fuel tax are coming from the two gas stations at the Oasis and the Speedway. And at the Speedway, more than half of it's diesel, which are truckers coming in and out of here, not people that live here, which is what we wanted to see. That's the reason we, that's the reason we did that tax, was to try and get people who don't live here to, to pay some of that burden.
The idea of the big box stores, everybody knows, is pretty much dying, so we won't have a Target, and we won't have a Pennies. We get about a million and a half dollars from Walmart? Is that about right?
In sales tax? No.
How much are we getting?
I can't say. I can say about, probably between 600 and 700,000 a year.
Did it go down? Has it gone down then?
No.
I thought it had. Okay, I thought we'd get more than that. Okay. Yes, Alderman Freeman?
So how much revenue will this property tax increase get us?
The total property tax increase is about 160,000. So 95 of that is your fire and police pension.
And that's spread over the whole city, the 160,000?
That's the whole city portion, yes.
Yes.
So we're looking at next year, an increase of roughly 1.7 million between the motor fuel tax and the sales tax increase. So why do we need this property tax increase? Because this more than makes up for what you're getting from that.
Well, my understanding was most of that was to help pay for the roads that we're way behind on. I mean, you'll see as we start to go through the budget, the budget process that Brent has a large list of projects that have been on the back burner as far as roads improvements go, as well as the storm sewer projects on the south side.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
There was a comment from the first lady that spoke that mentioned that she didn't think her house is worth what the assessed value was, or at least what they did for the original fair market value to assess her taxes. And I want everybody to make sure they understand, in the fall of every year, the assessor's office sends out a notice of, of the assessment for your property. And you've got a period, I think it's 30 or 60 days, within which to file an objection or appeal of that assessment. I hate suggesting that people do that because it kind of slits the city's throats from one perspective, but you need to do it. You need to compare what the assessor says your property is worth to what you think it's worth. One of the ways you can do that is if you go online to the Boone County website, because it's against the county that does these assessments. They maintain a database on their website. You can look at it by address, by PIN number, by owner's name, what have you, of how they've assessed all the other properties in your area. And they also have sales history in there and what the people actually paid for the properties. Class example, I got my tax bill this year, and I nearly, not the tax bill, the assessment, I was ready to flip out. I went online, compared it, and saw that actually the recent sales in the area reflected the increase that they were actually assessing me. So I did not appeal it. But I can tell you right now, all of your big industrial entities, your big commercial entities, what have you, every year, they look at that assessment, and frequently, they will challenge that assessment and get reductions in it. And there's absolutely no reason why you can't do it too. It's fairly user-friendly. You go over to the assessor's office, you show them, you know, the other comparables in your area as to why you think it should be lowered, and a lot of times, you actually have a lower tax bill. And so, please be aware of that, and that is an avenue you have to try and make sure that your houses or whatever property you have is being assessed correctly.
Well, I do want to say, though, I do feel that some of the problems, some of the property that's in the area, some of the things that aren't maintained in the town, in the city, you know, I have to monitor if the alleys are not cleared. I have to call, play, if a neighbor is a hoarder, and like, you know, we have a neighbor that four trucks will deliver, but we have to monitor that it's not done. So like, a lot of that is bringing our house values down, where I'm investing in my hang and in the street, and we care about where we live. I think that it's hard to, like, maintain that and have other people do the same without some of the city enforcing some of the regulations about removing debris and not blocking the alleyway. I shouldn't have to call and say, if you go in and have them put down all that, they're responsible for that area. I think some of those things need to happen too. I mean, we volunteer, we're VIPs, we try to get back to the city, and we try to, we have a neighborhood watch that we started. So we definitely care about the town, but I think there's some things that, some of the properties that bring some of the other prices down in the area.
Prior to 2008, we had two or three dedicated people that that was their job. They went around, they looked for code violations, and they tried to correct them. Since the recession, and we actually discontinued the service of what was the, the community service officers, there's only one person in the entire city whose job is solely to enforce, you call quality, I think it was quality of life type issues, garbage, debris, shrubs, zoning violations. There's one person to do that entire job for the entire state of 25,000, 26,000 people. And so, yes, unfortunately, it has become completely complaint-driven.
Yeah, if you call, it gets on her list, and she gets to them. It's hard, though, because a lot of people don't let us know. And then we get, we get to a house, and we're going, oh, my goodness. Plus, we had a discussion, a very contentious discussion, three different times, about passing stronger landlord rules. And as it turned out, after listening to the realtors and the property owners, it was voted down, not to do that. We all have our own opinions about that, but that was one thing. You know, the good property owners are never a problem. But we have some property owners that do not take care of their property, and it makes the city look awful. We have a list of houses that, in fact, we just got a grant, a small grant, but a grant nonetheless, to help us start fighting blight. And so we're looking at the worst of the worst and seeing what we can do. We just signed an governmental agreement with the Regional Planning Commission, a formation of a land bank. And the whole purpose of the land bank is to acquire and either demolish or improve properties and put them back in the market for sale. That'll take a while to get going. We're in that with Winnebago County and Stevenson County. What I will say is, everybody remember the hailstorm? It'll be three years this spring. That's been the best community development partner the city's had, because everybody's all of a sudden got new roofs and new siding, and neighborhoods started to look better, and people started to take better care of their houses, because they say, wow, the neighborhood's looking better. But unfortunately, we have a compliance officer in the city, and that's the majority of her job, is following up on those complaints. And the alderman called and let us know, Alderman Snow, almost And the alderman call and let us know, Alderman Snow, almost daily, lets us know things that he sees when he's out riding his bike. Uh, and we actually go and we issue letters, but it's not like you can go and make them do something right then. You have a process you have to go through. You have to send them a letter, and they have a certain number of days to get in compliance. And if they get in compliance, we waive the fine of the ticket. If they don't, then we don't waive the fine, and then we have to take them to court. And sometimes what happens when we take somebody to court about a property maintenance thing, they'll say, well, I just don't have any money and a little more time. And typically, the judge says, okay, you know, you have a little more time. And unfortunately, it seems to be the same offenders, time and time and time again, that, that we have to deal with that. So, it's not, it's not an easy thing, and if you're somebody that keeps your property up and tries to make the neighborhood look nicer, it gets a little grating at times. And you just wish you could go do something about it personally, you know? But tho- those are challenges for us, absolutely. Other comments or questions? Alderman Snow?
And, and I will say, call in and complain, because that's the only way it gets taken care of. The, um, city officials, lack of another word, don't have time to windshield, um, everything as they go through and critique everything, 'cause they would never get from one end of town to the other. You have to call it in and tell them what the address and where it is. It doesn't have to be your neighbor. If you're driving through town and you see a place that looks really crappy that should be addressed, send it in, and, you know, the worst that happens is they clean it up, you know? That's, that's the, the worst that can happen.
Like, we have a house on the interstate that had a fire, and the structure of the garage is still there. The landlords, if people don't live here, it is an ice floe in the first turn on the street, right next to, uh, I just couldn't take it in. Everyone wants to look at it. But there's still, there's garbage there and debris and bicycles and motorcycles, but the house burned down, but the garage is still there. So, like, we've been complaining about that property, and I think if it's what we can't reach the, the owners of the property, that's ridiculous. How can you not reach them when they own some property? I mean, who owns that? So, we're gonna have a garage there, and nobody can go there, we can't, you know, nobody takes care of the yard, it just... I mean, that's the kind of things we hear, is like, and that's why it comes back to paying more taxes, right? We wanna see the return on the investment, what the city's doing. What about all the gambling? Are we gonna just have gambling in gas stations? Are we turning it into like Las Vegas? Like, I don't, I wanna see everyone settle that. I, I love this town, I moved here four years ago, twenty-two years. So, I, I wanna see what they think, but I, it's, it's a struggle to see that your tenants are going out, but my property isn't worth very much, and then there's other reasons why my property isn't doing that well.
I was just gonna say, that garage, I believe, is on our shortlist for our, our grant. Yes, it's on, it's on the list, so.
It's been like ten years.
It is, we just got the grant, um, over the summer. Um, it's a forty thousand dollar grant for abandoned prop, it's an abandoned property program grant, so, VAB garage. I know there's two garages.
See, see, it would be wonderful if we could do that. But, you know, when it's somebody else's property, you're really restricted as to what you can do. You know, it's kinda like, let's take our neighborhood back, everybody show up with hammers and sledgehammers, and let's, you know, fix it. But unfortunately, you can't do that, and when, when the city gets involved, it's even harder to do those things. Alderman Brooks?
Yes, sir, uh, you seem to be against gambling. When that ord- You and I have to get together someday, I have to. Anyway, when we, uh, when we enacted the ordinance and allowed gambling here in Belvedere, uh, we looked at it very seriously, and wondering how it would affect the city and the crime rate. And everybody is afraid that, you know, the, the hoods are gonna come in and take over the town, so on and so forth. But, uh, it's actually, I think, I was a state trooper for thirty-one years. I think it's really, uh, benefited Belvedere. If we didn't have gambling in this town, people who liked to gamble, like you, you'd be going to Rockford, 'cause they got gambling.
How do you save your money?
No, that's only a short drive, it'd take a longer drive than that.
Like, a lot of people are not, are not trying to be a bunch of money, where you just, uh, a lot of, like, I'm really a born to do that, so it's better that I don't. I think there's a lot of people that struggle.
I can't either, I wouldn't be living in Belvedere.
I, I just worry that that's...
Only through the decent tax rates here in talent am I allowed to gamble, 'cause my wife would kill me. But anyway, I was just try, I was just trying to explain perhaps, uh, some of the reasoning behind gambling, and to keep our residents here. I hate to see those people walk out of the Chrysler plant and go over to Rockford and spend their paycheck. You know, I hate to see people living here in Belvedere that make their money here in Belvedere, or that they don't live here but make their money here, go over to Rockford and spend it. I'd like to see it the other way, where that money's coming this way, rather than going away from town. And that would benefit us all. Tax-wise, it means a lot, so. There's a lot of things that we look into as aldermen and, uh, and take into consideration. We're not trying to hurt the taxpayers of this town, I'll tell you that, 'cause I'm stingy.
And I'm not necessarily, I don't gamble, but I understand the parameters of where everybody's concerned, of A, of the social issue, but B, whether or not we wind up looking like Vegas. But the one caveat in that is, anytime you've got a strip mall, and all of a sudden, that has a certain amount of tax burden when it's empty. When now it's got a viable business in it, that property tax on that unit goes up, and therefore, they're paying a lot more in taxes, and that helps you out in the long run, because that five million or six million we're looking for every year, they have to pay more of that pie than they would have otherwise. So, it's kind of a catch-twenty-two in that regard, so.
You know, as to the city becoming a gambling town, uh, what, two months ago, or three months ago, we passed an ordinance capping the number of establishments at thirty.
And didn't you say also that the state is looking at how clustered gambling establishments?
One of the requirements in the, in the state statute that authorized the gambling is they authorized the gaming board to try and make sure they didn't have clusters of gaming right near each other, so as they're approving new licenses, they're trying to avoid having those three or four establishments in a row in a strip mall, so it looks like a little casino. They're trying to prevent that, but that's at the state level.
We've got quite a few things yet to go on the agenda tonight, so we have a motion and a second. Any final comments concerning, um, four thirty-eight H, second reading? Are not all those in favor? Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
No.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Brooks?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
Porter?
No.
Four in favor and four against?
It's a tie vote. The mayor can cast his deciding vote. The problem being, it's an ordinance requires six aye votes to pass no matter what. So, if there's none of four in favor, you can vote for it, but the motion would still fail.
No, the motion's lost.
The problem that you have now is that you may not levy a property tax next year, which means you have no money to pay any city operations whatsoever, including police and fire. I would...
Okay, motion's lost.
Oh, hang on. The council, somebody who voted on the prevailing side, which would, in this case, have been one of the no votes, could bring a motion to reconsider either today, it had to be today, 'cause the ordinance has gotta be passed this month.
By the twenty-first?
By the twenty-first. Absence a passage of some kind of a levy, the city will not be able to have operations. And I don't want to sound melodramatic, I was police, fire, and public works department, so are state administration.
The levy is not just about the increase in the levy. The levy is about the entire levy that we get to run the entire operations in the city. And now I am being scoldy, 'cause if you don't want fire, or police, or public works next year, that's what you're suing. Ladies and gentlemen, do you understand that?
Or a library, almost over seven hundred thousand of that, the library would have to close.
Is everybody aware of that's what you're, you're voting on?
Not just the increase, but you're voting no on any levy whatsoever for any city operations.
So, can we vote without the increase?
You can make a motion to, you could have made a motion to amend, yes.
I'll make a motion to amend the vote, minus the increase.
You already voted the motion down. It'll require a motion to reconsider by somebody that voted no with a second, and then a vote on the motion to reconsider place it back in its original position, which by, hang on a second. I don't know if we can change that with honorable or not, I have no idea. Hang on one second.
Okay.
Do you want to take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess. That is as it is. I hope you realize that we will not have fire or police, 'cause we can't, this has to be done by the twenty-first?
Friday.
Friday, and we don't have another meeting scheduled, and it has to be a layover, even if there's a reconsideration. So, we have no levy for next year, um, when it comes to this time to set the budget for next year. And the bottom line to that is, we will have to double our property taxes to make up for the shortfall this year to even operate the city. And so, you know, it's, uh, it's unfortunate. I don't even know whether it's worthwhile even considering with this agenda, continuing with the agenda tonight. But we will, and we'll see if we get, uh, no votes on everything else. Yes, Alderman Stevens?
I'm more than willing to reconsider my vote, but then I'll also make the motion that we don't include the increase.
One of the issues you have with the motion, you can bring a motion to reconsider at this meeting. If that motion to reconsider is seconded and passes, however, the problem you run into is that by your own Rule Eight, which not this council, but previous council adopted by ordinance, it requires that the original motion, being the one that you just, uh, did not pass, voted down, automatically lies over, cannot be decided tonight, to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. You don't have another regularly scheduled city council meeting this month. What I don't know, 'cause I've never done this research, is whether or not we can modify that state law that requires the levy to be passed in the month of December with our honorable authority. I don't know the answer to that. Shooting from the hip, my guess is no, but I don't know that, I can't tell you that. Um, if you brought the motion to reconsider, you could do that. If you want to vote on the original motion with an amendment tonight, you could do that. I just don't know that it would pass legal muster.
It's gonna have to court. So, do you want to try to go that route and see if we can salvage having a budget next year?
Yeah, I'd be more than willing to reconsider my vote if no one else wants to.
So, we have a motion to reconsider. Do I have a second? All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
This is just to reconsider. Brooks? Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
So, the vote is unanimous to reconsider. From a legal perspective, it has to be held over, and we only have the month of December until this Friday, because we have no other meetings scheduled this month, because of the holidays. Yes, Alderman Porter? Scheduled a special meeting?
As I stated a few moments ago, I'll, I'll read the rule of the, the last sentence. If the motion reconsider passes, which it just did, the original motion, resolution, or ordinance will be placed on the agenda of the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
That's not a special meeting.
Alderman Snow?
Being that, uh, the next regular scheduled meeting would be the twenty-fourth, which is quasi a holiday, could we move that regular meeting up to the Friday, the twenty-first?
But it's a special meeting, not a regular meeting. Your next regular council meeting is January seventh. You have a committee meeting next week.
Attorney Drell, will you check and see if we could dodge this because of, we don't have a regular, because of the holidays, a regularly scheduled meeting that we could have consideration of a special meeting this Friday?
I would have to know tomorrow, 'cause you have to give forty-eight hour notice if we're gonna have a meeting, so I'd have to know tomorrow.
Well, that's why, that's why I said Friday. Can we check that out and find out tomorrow on a timely basis?
It's not a state statute, it's absolutely no case law in point, it's specifically local ordinance only.
Okay.
There's no legal research to be done on it, frankly.
Okay, so what's your guess?
If the council wished... And wished to call a special meeting for this Friday, I could prepare an ordinance amending Rule Eight to not require it to go to a regularly scheduled city council meeting. The city council, as you know, typically, all ordinances are spo, uh, almost supposed to go to committee first. There is a provision with your code that allows you to waive that requirement and take an ordinance directly to council. There's also a provision with your own code that allows you to waive the two-week layover requirement for an ordinance. So, effectively, you'd have to have at this special meeting, first an ordinance to amend Rule Eight to allow you to consider the amended tax levy ordinance, and thereafter, consider the amendment to the tax levy ordinance. If the council wishes me to do that, I will do that work. I can get to Ms. Sarko tomorrow, so she can do her agenda, um, and get to her tonight. But that will require, first, an ordinance amending Rule Eight. To do that ordinance, you have to waive two procedural requirements. One, the committee requirement, the second, the two-week layover requirement.
Can people be here Friday night? 'Cause we already know one of them will not be here.
Who can be here Friday night? Can we also, if we're able to rewrite this and do this, can we also put an addendum or a part of it at the end of it that we revert to the normal procedure following this meeting?
I wouldn't...
Because I don't wanna do...
I wouldn't recommend that. Well, I'll probably just do...
If we're able to do this, I don't wanna do this every time. This is ridic, it's a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and you're gonna shut down the whole city for a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to prove a point.
I, I wouldn't recommend doing that, Mr. Mayor. I, all I'd probably do is change it from being a regularly scheduled city council meeting to the next city council meeting.
Okay. Well, we'll see about that tomorrow, and we'll see if we can do that, and please, all of you that are, can be available on Friday, be available on Friday.
See, back his hand up.
One thing we probably need to check is, that might have to be in by Friday at five, so it might have to be earlier in the day and not in the evening on Friday.
Friday's the twenty-first.
So, we need, okay, we need at least six votes. Can six of you be here Friday during the day? Hands.
They will vote yes.
Okay, so we'll pursue it. Let's finish this agenda, and we'll see what we can do about this tomorrow. Under Item C, Ordinance 439-H, the second reading, we have an ordinance making a levy and providing for a special service area number two tax in the city of Belvedere, Boone County, Illinois, for fiscal year beginning May one, two eighteen, and ending April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none, all of them in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is passed unanimously. It brings us to Item D, Ordinance 448-H, the second reading, an ordinance making the levy and providing for a special service area number three tax in the city of Belvedere, Boone County, Illinois, for fiscal year beginning May one, twenty eighteen, and ending April thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Motion to be approved by Snow, second, please. Alderman Ratcliffe, questions, comments? Further discussion concerning the motion, now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor for approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Ordinance 448-H, second reading, approved unanimously, which brings us to Item E, Ordinance 441-H, second reading, an ordinance vacating a remnant alley generally lying south, lying north of the United Pacific Railway and directly west of three fifteen South State Street, three nineteen S- South State Street in the city of Belvedere, Illinois. This is a four-step process, so just bear with me. I need a motion to approve 441-H first. I have a second. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, um, before the Alderman this evening is a revised ordinance along with revised exhibit. Um, some of the property owners, and Alderman Freeman brought some concerns to the city that we did not know about when the ordinance was first drafted. Specifically, uh, the question was how the alley is gonna be divided up, so that the existing furniture store still has access to their building, so they can get deliveries and things like that. As you remember, the original ordinance split the alley half and half lengthwise between the joint property owners. That follows state statute. Ms. Carlson, who's the original applicant, got together with her neighbor, and they were able to figure out that it would work better if, rather than splitting the alley lengthwise, they simply had the entire alley adjacent to each of the properties go to their property owner. On your desks in front this evening was a revised exhibit, which does exactly that. I also had to revise the ordinance, however, 'cause the original ordinance followed state laws that applies to non-home unit to government. I had to revise the, the ordinance to utilize our home rule powers, uh, so that we can change how that alley is divided between the adjoining property owners. So, that is before you tonight. The recommendation is to amend the ordinance to reflect the new ordinance distributed this evening, to distribute the property, uh, behind each of the property owners on the, I guess that'd be north side of the alley, east side of the alley, I get confused in Belvedere, along the east side of the alley, as shown on the exhibit.
Motion to amend? My Sanderson, second. My Snow. Questions, comments, further discussion? All those in favor remending the ordinance per the new language provided by the city attorney, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
No.
Brooks?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion is amended as proposed, which brings us back to another vote. I need a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
What is threshold for this to pass?
Six votes.
Because we utilize the home rule powers at six votes.
So, we are now voting on the amended motion presented. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brooks?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Seven in favor?
Motion is passed as amended and will take effect. Okay, hundred, under, new business. motions from Building, Planning, and Zoning Public Works, of note, December tenth, twenty eighteen. Public safety motions will be presented by me, because neither the chairman nor the vice chairman are here to present. First, we have a motion to approve replacing eight portable radios for the Belvedere Fire Department with Motorola APX four thousands at a cost of sixteen thousand, eight hundred, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion, now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is passed unanimously. Next step, we will have finance and personnel motions presented by Chairman Ratcliffe. Chairman Ratcliffe?
Thank you, Mayor. B, motion to approve the Comcast franchise fee settlement.
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend tableing that motion this evening.
That's right, my mistake.
Um, we do not have a proposed settlement for you to consider, yes, so what I'd recommend is that you table this matter to, generally to the future, and when we have the actual number for you, we can bring it back to you.
Motion by Snow, second, by Porter, third by Brooks. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion to table is passed unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Snow?
Out of curiosity, not knowing anything about state legislation and all that good stuff, can the state legislators actually do a resolution that would allow us an extension? Just tossing that out there as a...
I don't know, call your state rep. I have no idea. Motion to adjourn? Alderman Sanderson, second, second by Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.